Good evening. The regular meeting of the Belfour City Council is called to order on Monday, May 8, 2023, for regular session at 5:34 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Santinez.
Here. All right.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Hamada.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, there's no one here to speak on the closed session item. Okay, Mr. Stewart, item three.
Two items tonight. The first is conference or labor negotiator. It's an agency to negotiate as myself. The employer organizations represented are the three employee units represented by AFSMI, including local 1511, the Belfour City Employees Association, and the Bellflower -- all three bargaining units represented by AFSMI and the City of Belfour and Belfour Employees Association. And second item is initiation litigation. We have one item.
Okay. Are there any recusals or conflicts hearing none? There's no one here from the public to speak on this item, so with that, we will recess to closed session. All right, good evening, Bellflower. The meeting of -- the regular meeting of the Belfour City Council is called to order on Monday, May 8, 2023 at 7:03 PM. We're reconvening from the open -- from the closed session, and there's no reportable action taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Santinez.
Here. So motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation will be led by me, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Joel Huckman, our Director of Public Safety. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of community. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us this wonderful community, very active citizens of this city of Bellflower. We thank you for giving us our first responders, our members of the military. Please guide them and watch over them as they watch over us. We thank you for giving us our wonderful staff to keep the city of Bellflower moving forward. As we gather tonight, please remember those -- we keep those in our prayers, those who are homeless, those who are needy, those who are unemployed, those who are hungry. Please nourish them, please heal them, and please give them the healing that they so deserve. As we gather tonight to discuss the business for us, please guide us, enlighten us, and help us understand these issues. We ask all this name, all these petitions in your mighty name. Amen.
Would you please face the flag, hand over your heart, join me in saying?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Huckman. Tonight's announcement, I will start. The City of Bellflower is proud to announce Bellflower Connect, an expansive framework of specialized wired and wireless technology, which, once fully installed, will provide free internet connectivity for Bellflower residents, businesses, and visitors. ICCN and City Staff are actively working to complete this new smart initiative to the use of indoor and outdoor access points, positions throughout the city, which will provide high-speed wireless access for all smart devices and laptops within the city boundaries. And on May 1st, we actually started using the Bellflower Connect. So for more information on this initiative, please visit www.bellflower.org/Connect. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board is hosting a regional job fair at Simmons Park next month on Saturday, June 3rd this year, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Dress for success. Bring your resumes and be prepared for potential on-the-spot interviews. For more information, please call 562-273-9882. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To help support local business owners, the City of Belfour can highlight a local business in its monthly e-citizen newsletter. Share business updates, special events, holiday celebrations, and more by emailing your information to economic-dev@bellflower.org. To show support for new business in the city, business owners and operators can request a free ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the day and meet the community. For more information about this, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2010. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which will take place on Tuesday, May 30th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Tonight, we're very pleased to have three proclamations. The first proclamation is proclamation declaring National Public Safety Week, and we have a recipient of the proclamation. He is our Community Service Officer, Daniel Huster. Daniel has been a Belfour employee since 2011 as a Community Services Officer. One of the things he enjoys about his job is the ability to interact with the community and address constituents' concerns. He also enjoys the variety of roles he gets to play in the Public Safety Department. He's been a Belfour resident his entire life, other than his time spent in the Marine Corps. So we will recognize Daniel Huster later on in a few minutes. And the next proclamation is proclamation declaring National Public Works, and we are so pleased to have Bernardo "Bernie" Inigas to receive the proclamation. Bernie has been a City employee since October 2000. He has served the city in a number of capacities, all in the Public Works Department. Most recently, Bernie served as the Public Works Manager. Today, sadly for us, but we're very pleased for Bernie, today is his last day with the City of Bellflower after 22 years of dedicated work. He'll be moving on to be the Public Works Director in the City of Bell Gardens. We wish you the best of luck, Bernie, and appreciate your dedication to the City of Bellflower. And the third proclamation is proclaiming -- proclamation declaring the month of May as Asian American and a Pacific Islander Month. And then we have Brian Ahumada, a public -- no, 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 no. He's a teacher. First teacher first. A teacher at Somerset Continuation School and a commissioner in the Parks and Rec Department. All right, so we will start first with Daniel, and then followed by Bernie, and then Brian. So can I invite our -- my colleagues to the riser? Thank you so much. Daniel, thank you so much for joining us, and I'd like to present this proclamation in appreciation of City of Bell proclaims Public Safety Week. And I will not read the whole thing because we have so many proclamations.
Oh, so we always do.
So anyway, so we're proclaiming this week as the Public Safety Week. So it's signed by myself, Mayor Sunny Ar Santinez, Mayor Protam, Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Dan Coops, Councilmember Ray Dutton, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. And I, on behalf of the City of Bellflower, just want to thank you for the hard work you're putting in to keep our city safe.
Thank you very much.
You want to say something, Daniel?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Are you sure?
I'm shy.
You're giving the meeting short.
You had the whole thing now. Let me have the time.
Had I known.
Well, don't skip on this one.
All right, I was asked, so I will oblige. Are you serious? Okay, all right. In appreciation of the City of Bellflower proclaims National Public Safety -- Public Works Week, connecting the world through public works. And let me just read a portion of this that is really compelling to me. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Bellflower to gain knowledge and of and maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. So we're proclaiming this, the week of May 21st to 27th, as National Public Works Week. And we urge all citizens to join the representatives of American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. So signed by myself, we are Sunny Ar Santinez, Mayor Protam, Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Bernie, on behalf of the city, we thank you so much for all the work that you put in and the rest of public works staff, because you are in the -- you're always in the back, not in the forefront. And what you do is you maintain the infrastructure of the city. That's why we have a great city, because of the work that you put in. So with that, thank you so much. And I said earlier, we will miss you. It's sad that today is your last day, so it's kind of bittersweet for us and to me personally. I really enjoyed working with you, but you have to spread your wings, move on, and I'm glad that you were able to get that opportunity to become a Director of Public Works at the City of Bell Garden. I think it's their gain, our loss, but we will deal with it. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You want to say something?
Thank you. I'm just accepting this on behalf of the men and women of the Public Works Department, and it's been a great pleasure serving this community. Thank you.
All right, there's one more. Especially, there's one more for you. Hold on. So this is because this is your -- today's your official last day. We're giving you the certificate of achievement presented to Bernardo Inigas for 22 years of dedicated service. Let me just read this. It's not going to be that long, Dan. Thank you for 22 years of outstanding service to the city. Your exceptional dedication and commitment to the organization reflect the dynamic spirit of achievement that sets our employees apart. We value your service and commend you for your special accomplishments. So thank you so much. Thank you. Brian, thank you for taking the time to accept this proclamation. In appreciation, the City of Belfour proclaims Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And the whole month is being proclaimed as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So I will not read the whole proclamation, but I want to thank you for all the work that you do, especially teaching at Somerset Continuation School. In fact, let me just say that I needed a wood carving project. I gave it to Brian, and his students did it, and I was very impressed with the quality of work. It was done manually.
Yes, all by hand.
All by hand. So it says, "God is good all the time." Very good. So I want to present this proclamation. Okay. And on a personal note, Brian and I used to exchange persimmons. He has one variety, I have another variety.
We trade.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So thank you again for all those who received the proclamations. We really appreciate it. All right, next item, Mr. Stewart, item number 10, public comments.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Before you start, let me just remind everyone at the request of our City Clerk, please sign in, state your name, because your name will be in the minutes of the meeting, and also if you can speak direct to the microphone.
We have a special presentation this evening, and it's a two-part presentation. I think you'll understand is that she's going to present this on behalf of a child who benefits from these services. My name is Lee Squire, and her name is Fernanda Hernandez. Lee Squire, Vietnam veterans. Dear Mayor and City Council, police officers and their families, veterans of Bellflower. National Police Week, May 14 to May 20, 2023, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2023. Veterans, veterans of military reserves and the National Guard serve in local policing across America. National Police Week honors the fallen and honors the living. The Purple Heart Medal honors those in the military who are killed or wounded in combat. We veterans have placed below -- we veterans have paced below on this plaque, National Police Week, the posted stamp with the Purple Heart Medal in honor of our fallen comrades as peace officers. This honors our fallen peace officers who were veterans of military reserves and the National Guard. Also, to attack police is to attack the honor of the veterans of this country. Fernanda will now present the framed picture of National Police Week with the Purple Heart Medal. God bless America, God bless the military and its veterans, God bless local policing and families. She now presents this picture to the LA County Sheriff's Department, Lakewood Division.
Thank you, Mr. Squires.
Thank you, police officers, for our freedom and safety. It's okay if you make mistakes. You'll keep trying and trying and trying, and you will fix those mistakes.
Well said, Fernanda. Well said. Thank you.
Turn it off the internet. We now present this to the LA Sheriff's Department, Lakewood Division.
Okay, thank you. Officer Shore, or please come up. Thank you so much.
It's going to be a hard act to follow. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Cheryl Williams, as I think you know. This was just kind of spur of the moment. I just became aware today of the mural at the speedy auto tent there on Woodruff, and I took a chance and drove by it, and I know there's some controversy. It's on the front of the building, but I want to go on record as saying it is impressive, and I think the city needs to take advantage of it because I'm sure it draws people in from our surrounding communities. I know I took a bunch of pictures of it, and it's -- I could see it was real gaudy and bright colors, but it kind of just blends, and I just want you to kind of keep in mind that it really does add to our city, and I think we could really use it to draw people into our city even more than they come today. So I just wanted to go on record as saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Vaughn Hosman. I'll make this quick. Two issues. One, I talked to Victor Sanchez earlier today about the fact that we need a three-way traffic signal at Clark and Cedar, because we have -- it's a narrow portion of the street right there. We have one to two accidents a month in there, and it's always from people trying to turn in front of each other and -- or somebody getting around somebody who's stopping to turn, and there's always a situation. To go the cheapest route, most cost-effective, you could put in a three-way signal, like you've got a couple of blocks up on Clark and Flower. That would be a very easy fix, and it would solve the problem. That way, you wouldn't have to buy any property, do any reconfiguring of lanes, or corner cuts, or whatever. So that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the mural that everybody's talking about. Whether you like it or not is not really the point. If it's not code, then you can't do it. You know, that's just it. Because if you grant that, then it just opens up the door, and it just gives a green light to other people doing whatever they want. And I don't think the public understands why you have codes, as in the zoning code as an example of why can't I put up a gas station next to Ray Dutton's house? Well, that's why we have zoning codes. That's why you have codes, period, to keep things nice and to make it a quality of life in the city. So, you know, like, as I say, it doesn't really matter whether you're for or against it. It's just, if it's not code, then you can't do it. You know, it's just that simple. So anyways, the main reason I'm here is the signal. I would really like to see that expedited because there's just too many accidents there. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hosman. Mr. Stewart or Mr. Gurecki, can you look into that request? Okay, thank you. And regarding the mural, we cannot comment on that because it's an active code enforcement case. So if you're speaking about this matter, if you can just add something to it, you're more than welcome. Okay.
Hi, Darlene Palacios. I wasn't going to speak today, but he's a block from me. So we have a safety issue. We have a continuing safety issue. And hang on while I sign my name. We're having a problem at Rosen Clark.
Mrs. Palacios, speak to us, please.
Okay. So now, well, we have a problem at Rosen Clark. You already know that. We're still -- I'm still trying to hope and get flashing lights at the corner so that the disabled people will be able to have more time to get across the street. We do appreciate -- we do endlessly appreciate the moving of the crosswalk, but there is a big safety issue, just like he said. I sent you a photo. Car crash, Clark and Cedar, last week. So what are we going to do about these problems? It's on his block, my block? That's it. Oh, and the rent increase, you know? People are fleeing California. People are fleeing Bellflower. There's a -- I know that my property management company, located right here in Bellflower, owns and or manages a lot of property. All the rents went up 10%. Yes, people are planning to flee. I don't think the homeless shelter is going to be enough for what happens next if this continues to happen. My building was probably paid for 40 years ago. It's a very old building. It has things before my Vietnam veteran times. That building is paid for. The rent keeps going up, and they do nothing to fix it. So in light of that, they own a lot of properties, and I don't know how many other property management companies are in Bellflower, but I think we should consider rent control here in Bellflower. Darlene, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palacios. Let me just say, in terms of traffic signals, crosswalks, anything about streets, there has to be a traffic study before we can take any action. I know it sounds frustrating, but it has to be done the right way, and that's the only way that the city will be protected. There has to be a traffic study. Just to let you know, even painting a curb red, there has to be a traffic study. The traffic engineer visits the site, do a line-of-site study to make sure that it is done properly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sanchez.
If we make -- would it be possible to have our director just briefly speak on the work that we have been doing and anticipate to be doing for the record?
Okay.
Please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Gurecki, if you're ready.
Yeah, certainly. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, in terms of work that--
Would the public comment in?
No, we're responding to the public comment. We still have public comments, Joe.
In response to some of the items that we're looking at in terms of specific traffic enhancement projects here in the city, from the budget discussions last couple of weeks, the Public Works will be bringing back to council a series of potential projects to look at. One of those components will be looking at some of the intersections that should probably be studied to determine whether or not they meet warrant analysis for traffic signal installation. So that will definitely be one of the items that's brought back to City Council. We'll also be looking at some other locations in the area where in the city that we would look at doing more of the rapid flashing beacons, as well as the radar feedback signs that we've all talked about. So there will be something coming back to the council here. If not the second meeting in May, then first meeting in June, kind of zeroing in on some very specific traffic projects that are going to be before the council for consideration, and I look for the council to give me guidance on how to proceed with those.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Len. I think specifically I meant more on Rosen Clark, but I appreciate the full details.
Mm-hmm. So Rosen Clark is--
Just what you've done, what we've done lately, and what we are working on.
So we've done the pedestrian crosswalk enhancements, and then currently, we've completed the design for the rapid flashing beacons for both Clark and Rose, as well as up at Clark and Ramona, and we're in the middle of procuring those. Once those are procured, then we'll use City of Santa Fe Springs, our traffic signal contractor, to do the installation of that equipment at those locations. One of the items that's on the agenda tonight is the moving the bus stop, Long Beach Transit Bus Stop, from the north side on Clark, north of Park, to the south side, so it does not inhibit the sight of the rapid flashing beacon. So there's a lot of parts moving. Unfortunately, it doesn't go as fast as the public would like, but it's the steps we have to take, the agencies we have to work with, because there's a lot of different people that have involvement with this stuff here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
All right, thanks for the update. All right, next, public comments.
It's nice to be among the less-than-a-hundred club again.
It's nice to be among the Less Than a Hundred Club again. And what I'm gonna say ties in with your Safety Week, but it may, it may, it should go on forever. So what I'm about to say is appropriate for this Safety Week. And I'm glad to be here again on the City Council to address you guys. And Ray's not here tonight, huh? Mayor, I beg your indulgence for going over the three-minute guard of virus. Because this might be my last opportunity before a hundred to give you guys my two cents. So I'll start now. Our Belleflower City does not need to glorify any sports stars or announcer or anybody in mural pictures that are facing the public street view. That someday could cause a life lost or hurt or property damage from any possible incident. Safety comes first and foremost. Items displayed could cost city thousands, maybe millions of dollars in lawsuits against city. City cannot afford or need any lawsuits that may result if approval is given. Because I don't know. None, none of these guys are heroes in my eyes. None of them saved any lives at the risk of their own like our heroes in World War II did, when they gave up their lives and their futures to save all of us here to be today. And the present, it presents a clear and present danger as shown. Business can display in-store to entice customer business. Profit is no valid reason above safety for all. Victims will sue our city for business profit. Safety mandates no approval of this mural show. And you guys don't need to be sucked in on a mural site by Hollywood or LA because this ain't Hollywood or LA. They can keep it up there if they want. Thank you, guys, for letting me talk, give you guys my last two cents before a hundred.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, I'll make a toast to you guys on your birthdays. Millions all lift to be a hundred, and I get to come to your birthday party.
Well said, Joe. Thank you. Anyone else?
Honorable Mayor and council, my name's Andrew San Nicolas. Just wanted to officially introduce myself. I am the new executive director of Kingdom Causes Bellflower. I'm excited to be here. The more I learn about the rich history of Kingdom Causes in the city of Bellflower, the more excited I get to be a part of the team and hopefully continue on just the legacy of trying to make Bellflower better and create space for everyone, all of our neighbors, to live, work, and belong. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyways, it was nice meeting you too, and welcome to Bellflower. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, we're item, item 11A. Mr. Stewart?
Consideration possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan and adopt Resolution Number 23-17, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023-24 Annual Action Plan authorizing the city manager to submit the AAP to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to implement the programs identified in the AAP. And tonight, we have, I'm gonna mess, get this name right, Agnesa Ananekian, uh, make the presentation for us. Is that close enough?
Can you say it again?
Yeah. Maybe not.
Agnesa?
Agnesa Ananekian. Agnesa Ananekian.
Ananekian.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. As required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, the city is conducting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023-24 Annual Action Plan. Um, the annual action plan is a one-year plan which outlines the city's use of its community development block grant funds, also known as CDBG funds, and home investment partnership program funds, also known as home. More specifically, the action plan describes the anticipated goals and activities for the upcoming program year. Every five years, the city must submit a consolidated plan to HUD, which is a five-year plan for the use of CDBG and home funds. Then the consolidated plan is carried out throughout the annual action plans. This year's annual action plan is the fourth action plan in this, of the five-year consolidated, consolidated planning period. CDBG funds must be used for activities that benefit low-income residents or for promoting economic development and eliminating blight. The CDBG program can fund activities such as community and public facilities, infrastructure improvements, economic development, public services, and business assistance. No more than 20% of the allocation can be spent on administration, and no more than 15% can be spent on public service activities. On February 27th, HUD announced that the city of Bellflower will be receiving $866,001 in CDBG funds. In addition to the fiscal year 23-24 entitlement funds, the city anticipates approximately $474,141 in carryover funds, with the total estimated funding just over 1.3 million. It should also be noted that the city received 138,000 of program income during the 22-23 fiscal year, which was used to determine the city's 15% public service cap for the 23-24 fiscal year. The city published the Notice of Funding Availability, also known as the NOFA, on February 10th, 2023, to solicit applications for CDBG funds. The city received a total of four applications comprised of two public services, one economic development, and one fair housing services. The proposed CDBG budget and activities for fiscal year 22, 23, 24 are depicted on the current slide. CDBG funds can be used to support public service agencies that provide vital services in the community. Staff is recommending the applications from the Fair Housing Foundation, Kingdom Causes Bellflower's Good Soils Program, and the Bellflower Volunteer Center. Staff recommends funding the Fair Housing Foundation at 18,000. They provide fair housing services to residents to prevent discrimination. Their services include, but are not limited to, referrals, investigations, case management, litigation, and resolving landlord-tenant disputes. As a CDBG grantee, the city has a responsibility to formatively further fair housing. Therefore, HUD requires some sort of fair housing service available. The Fair Housing Foundation services, services satisfy this requirement. Staff is recommending funding Kingdom Causes Bellflower Good Soils Program at $25,000. Kingdom Causes offers employment opportunities through their Good Soils Industries program. The program assists in hiring residents that are underemployed and unemployed. They also provide on-the-job training, certification programs, and job acquisition skills for those who may have a criminal record or at risk of being homeless. Next, the city has budgeted approximately $125,600 of CDBG funds for the volunteer center. The volunteer center recruits, trains, supervises, and recognizes individuals who volunteer their time to serve the low- and moderate-income residents of Bellflower. The volunteer center is also part of the 15% public service cap and is primarily funded with CDBG. All three agencies participated in the program in prior years and met their goals without any issues. Next, CDBG funds, code enforcement activities that address blight in CDBG-eligible areas. The city has budgeted approximately $338,124 to continue these activities. It should also be noted the recommended amounts for code enforcement and volunteer center are slightly different than the draft plan that has been published for public review and comment for the past 30 days. The recommendations were revised due to program income received by the city. The final plan will be adjusted to reflect tonight's recommendations prior to submission to HUD. The city continues to also budget its debt service payments for its Section 108 loan that was used for several capital improvements in the town center area. This next fiscal year, that payment is about $528,218. This was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004. The loan will be paid off by the end of the five-year consolidated planning period. As previously mentioned, up to 20% of CDBG funds can be used for administration of the program. Staff has budgeted $155,200 for staff and consultants' costs in fiscal year 23-24. Lastly, there is approximately $150,000 being carried over from the prior year's new small business startup loan program, which was unable to be completed due to a delay in businesses opening. Staff is recommending rolling the funds over to the 23-24 fiscal year. This program would be targeted towards the small businesses at the Orchard at Bellflower Center. Next are home funds. They are meant to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners in the city and must serve low-income households eligible. Eligible uses of these funds include homeowner rehabilitation, the development of affordable housing, property acquisition for the development of affordable housing, and homebuyer activities. A maximum of 10% of home allocation can be used for program administration, and at least 15% of the allocation must be set aside for a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO, for an affordable housing project. In fiscal year 23-24, the city will receive $401,503 in home funds. The city anticipates approximately over 1.7 million in carryover. The estimated total funding for home is just over $2.1 million. The city is not programming, um, program income at this time as it varies annually based on loan principal, interest, and equity-sharing payments returned to the city during the fiscal year. Any program income that the city does receive will be reinvested back into the home program. Um, this next slide has the proposed home budget for next fiscal year. Staff has budgeted $250,000 for the home improvements program. The home improvement program provides loans and grants to qualified low-income homeowners who wish to make qualifying improvements to their home or repair health and safety issues. Approximately 1.9 million is set aside for one or more CHODO project. This amount includes over $1.7 million of carryover from the CHODO line item last year and any available carryover from the home improvements program. A CHODO must be a nonprofit agency that will develop, own, or sponsor an affordable housing project. Staff is looking at using these funds for a potential permanent supportive housing project. And lastly, staff has budgeted $40,150 for staff and consultant costs. On April 7th, 2023, a notice of a 30-day public comment period, and this public hearing was published in a local newspaper, and the draft action plan was made available for public review and comment from April 7th through today. And with that, our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution 23-17, or alternatively, take other actions related to this item. And that completes the presentation. We're available for questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Ananekian. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Oh, thank you. Uh, can, can you show the first, the first chart?
Sure.
On, um, there you go.
Yes.
Okay, this one. So do you recall, um, the carryover from '22-23? What line item was not fully utilized? You know, of hand?
It was, majority was code enforcement funds, I believe that was not, and then we also carried over the pro, um, the business assistance program funds.
So we can, we can just pour something else. If it wasn't used for, let's say, code enforcement in one year, we can re-designate it the following year?
Yes, they would be carried over to the next year, the available funds.
And we can choose whatever line category
Correct.
needs the money.
With the exception of public services. Public services
Because there's a cap.
Because there is a cap of entitlement and program income, yes.
Got you. Okay. And do you have any deadline for using that money? Do, do, do they track it? Let's say, if it was granted in year one, how many years do we need to? Can we spend that money?
For CDBG, right now HUD is sending out letters who haven't, for any cities who haven't used their 2016 funds. So we're going back about five or six years.
Oh, really?
So the city's doing very well with expending their funds.
Okay. Oh, very good. And then, um, and then let, let me just clarify about, because I called Mr. Delonge earlier about the, the difference in the, um, just what, what you said in public, in, um, public safety, uh, code enforcement?
Uh-huh.
Code enforcement and volunteer center, right?
Correct.
There was a swap of 20, 27,000. So you'll be revising page 21 and page 27 of the action plan?
Correct.
Okay. Very clear. All right. Thank you so much. Any question of Ms. Ananekian? Uh, councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, great presentation. Thank you, Agnesa.
Thank you.
I'll just, he's brave. I'll stick to the one I can say. On page, uh, so could you go to the actual home program funds?
Yes.
So, uh, we carried over, or not carry over, but sorry, can you?
Oh, sorry, this one?
No, the, the next one. You're right.
Here you go.
So on the 250, the home improvement program, can you tell us how many? We've had that before, right? We had that in the previous year. How well was that utilized?
For this current fiscal year, we have about eight, um, homes that we're currently working on, when it's, uh, mobile homes, and one single-family home. So they are going, they are being used. It's that, um, the biggest issue is because for home funds, you have to have, you have to stay under, um, unable, you have, excuse me, we have a after rehab value that we cannot exceed with home funds.
Per applicant?
Per applicant.
Okay. And it does not trigger prevailing wage?
No, this does not trigger prevailing wage.
Good to know. So we anticipate the same level of applicants?
Or, I would have to, you know what? I take that back. For the prevailing wage, I'm gonna have to defer to that part.
I, I think it, it's Davis Bacon that this is because it's federal funds.
Correct. Thank you.
Because it's federal ba, I mean, federal funds.
It's Davis Bacon instead of prevailing wage. It's a federal rule on those.
It's more or less the same thing. It's just a federal.
I want to make sure they're correct wordings.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. Do, how many do we anticipate this year, then?
Well, we have a waiting list right now. So, yeah, it's just, as Agnesa mentioned, the, uh, sometimes we have trouble getting people qualified for these because we have to look at the after-value of the project. So when they put their money, when they put this home money in, if it exceeds a certain value, which I think is 90% of the area
95% of the area median.
Area median of the, the home values, they may not qualify. So sometimes we go through a long process of trying to qualify somebody and find out that the improvements they want knock it out of contention.
No, well, I think, I mean, honestly, eight was higher than what I was expecting, so I think that's, that's great. Right, that it's getting put to use. All right, wonderful. And I'm okay for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Coops?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when you said you're working on, yeah, I think you said eight mobile homes and one
Single-family home.
Single, when you say working on, does that mean they're in the process of being constructed? Are they still on the paperwork trail, or where are we at in the process?
Um, they're in the process. We have them kind of sporadic. Um, we have, some are out to bid, some are still in the process of verifying eligibility, some are, we're still doing lead paint abatement assessments. So they're in the process of being, um, come, becoming eligible.
How many have we completed in the last year?
I believe last time I looked, we were up to four or five that we've completed.
In what length of time? In one year, an annual?
From this current fiscal year, correct.
All right. But we've got, those eight will count this year or next year?
They will be for this year.
Okay. And then you've got a, a waiting list of quite a few, apparently. Primarily, um, mobile homes more than single-family?
Yes, because they qualify easier than the single families with that post-rehab value issue that we have to deal with. So we're often taking it upon ourselves to do a survey of the values of the houses to see as the values go up so that we can try to qualify more of these rehab programs for the single-family dwellings.
Do mobile homes go up in value?
They do, but they don't have the same requirement that the single-family homes have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank councilmember Coops. Councilmember Dunn?
I have no questions.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second, motion by councilmember Coops, seconded by councilmember Sanchez to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? It's a very exciting topic.
Fun as we have.
Move the folks to public hearing.
Motion by councilmember Coops, seconded by councilmember Sanchez to close up the public hearing without objection. That will be the order. All right. Councilmember Dunn? Any other comments?
No, I think it's all been said.
You want a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to, uh,
adopt the fiscal year 23-24 Annual Action Plan and adopt Resolution Number 23-17, a resolution approving the fiscal year 23-24 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the city manager to submit the annual action pan, plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, and authorizing the city manager also to take actions necessary to implement the programs identified tonight.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Coops to adopt Resolution 23-17. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, there are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration. There's no consideration items. We're now moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have, would like, has any conflict first? Any conflict on the consent?
No.
No.
No conflicts? Okay. Anyone would like to pull an item? Nope? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. Okay, now down to the last item, uh, council reports. Um, Councilmember Dutton?
I have nothing to share tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Coops?
I have nothing to share tonight.
No, you do.
I do? Oh, yes, I've got a memorial to serve. Let Victor do it first and then I'll conclude with that.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll, uh, I'll report back just, uh, a couple of items. Uh, first off, thank you for the appointment to, uh, Contract Cities. I can share that I've also been asked to serve on the, uh, Board of Executive Directors and I'll be chairing the Public Safety Committee.
Wow, congratulations.
Cream rises to the top, you know?
Oh, well, you know. I'll, I'll share that first. And then, uh, second, um, this weekend I took a, uh, I was invited by Metropolitan Water District to, uh, do a site inspection of the Hoover Dam, the Parker Dam, and then, uh, also the pipeline that bring all our water to Southern California, not just our area, but even San Diego and so forth. And, uh, it's quite impressive. I'll be honest with you. Uh, my first time at any of these locations, I think one of the things that I take for, you know, for granted, or I think, um, one of the things that we all take for granted, maybe at some point in time, is how easy it is to open the faucet and the water just comes out. Um, but, uh, to see Hoover Dam as low and depleted as it is, it's kind of terrifying and scary from that standpoint. And, uh, lastly, I'll share that, uh, it's unfortunate that we aren't in the region capturing all the water, right, that, that, that we've had. We, we have the tendency to believe that the rain we've just had has all been captured and it hasn't. And so, anyhow, I'll, I'll leave it at that. It was, uh, a very informative. And so, I, I recommend you, you take that, uh, that field trip one of these days. And then, uh, lastly, I won't have the privilege of attending, um, Bernie's, uh, farewell event on Thursday. I will be, um, unavailable, but I just want to share that, uh, Bernie's been an amazing, uh, staff member here. The time that I've had the pleasure of working with him, he's been very, um, diligent, very, uh, uh, just gone above and beyond to handle any situation, any issue. I'll tell you, I call him maybe four to five times a day on bulky item stuff and, and or graffiti and the guys are out there cleaning it up right away. Uh, so just want to wish him the best of luck. I know, I know we, we were losing a quality employee and a quality friend and just someone who really has a lot of institutional knowledge. But, uh, but Bell Gardens has gained someone, uh, amazing. And then I, I do want, uh, um, just pass on a message, uh, on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Hamada, who, who said, um, and I quote, "I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to Bernie for the well-deserved promotion. He has the skills and takes a wealth of experience to the next community. Their gain is tremendous. Go Trojans with a smile." So, so I'll leave it at that. Um, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Back to you, Councilmember Coops.
And, you know, I want to also tell everyone how much Bernie has been appreciated over the 22 years he's been here. He's done a fantastic job and we wish him well. He, we hate to see him go, but it's Bell Gardens has really got a good man and someone that's been trained in our city here by Len and his predecessors. And, uh, uh, it's cool that he's been able to take it to the next level and be in charge of a, a city of Bell Gardens. But I want to reiterate that. But also, I want to adjourn this meeting tonight in memory of someone who's lived in Bellflower a long time, and her name is Barbara Ann Liberator. Now, she is the wife of John Butts. And John usually sits up front here and keeps us honest and tells us what's good and what's bad and more stuff about what's bad. But nevertheless, he's a respected member of our community and, uh, he's a friend of mine. And I wanted to make sure to explain that Barbara was born on March the 2nd, 1943, and she passed away on April 26th, 2023 at the age of 80. She moved to Bellflower in 1954 and attended Seritas College. Barbara was active at the, in the community with notably, she did a lot of volunteer work at the Lakewood Sheriff's Station. And, uh, she was well-known over there and her work was exemplary and they just thought the world of what Barbara Liberator did there. Obviously, I guess she didn't want to adopt the name Barbara Butts, but so she kept the name Barbara Liberator. Barbara leaves behind a loving family, including a husband of 37 years, John Butts, who I mentioned previously. She has two children, uh, David and Valerie, and she had another son who passed away about five years ago. And she has six grandchildren. And so, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Liberator Butts family. And so, uh, thank you for allowing me to do this.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Uh, for my report, I just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, the, um, the Bravo Awards on May, on April 27th was well-done. Uh, thank you, public work, uh, public, um, Parks and Rec staff for doing a wonderful job. I think everything went well. It's very smooth. And congratulations to all the awardees. And also, last Saturday, we had a successful art festival. Uh, the students, the kids, um, from third to sixth graders, uh, were so artistic. And again, I want to thank, um, our Parks and Rec staff for organizing that event. I've invited the, all the winners to come here at the next, uh, city council meeting. So, expect a lot of students
And parents.
and parents and teachers at the next meeting. Expect this, it's gonna be a full house. And then also, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, um, in memory of Ray Lucas, a good friend of mine. Uh, Ray Lucas was born to Adolfo and Theodore Lucas in 1930 in Nueva Ecija, Philippines, where I also came from, and passed away on April 6th, 2023. Uh, through his childhood, um, he, although his childhood was interrupted by the, by the Japanese occupation during World War II, Ray's youth was filled with many happy times on the family farm in Bunol in the town of Gimba. Uh, he earned a Bachelor of Science in Fisheries from University of the Philippines, followed by a Bachelor's Arts in Political Science and Law Degree, both from University of East, of the East. It was kind of interesting because, um, he finished his law degree and he was taking the bar exam and he's waiting and waiting. And his wife is a nurse, so she got a, um, a visa, a working visa, to come to the U.S. And so, she told her then-boyfriend, Ray, "Well, if you want to take the law degree, I'm gonna go to the U.S." And, and Ray changed his mind, so he, he flew with, he flew with her to come to the, America. So, while living in Manila, he met Esther, um, um, Coronel Ramirez, and the two married in 1959. Nine years later, they immigrated to the U.S., settling in Downey, California. Their only son, Mark, was born soon thereafter. In 1971, the family moved to a house in, in Bellflower, right, by, uh, close to, near Lakewood Boulevard. And Ray lived there until Esther, with Esther until her passing in 2009. And he was very independent since then. Their Mark's son and his wife, Virginia, proudly gave him one grandson, Matthew, in 2001. Uh, Ray worked for many years in financial management, first with Montgomery Ward in Norwalk, then at Lloyds Bank in Monterey Park, until his retirement in the 1990s. For nearly 50 years, he was a good, he was a proud, vibrant, and active member of his church community, which is, uh, Saint Dominic's Abbey up on Bellflower and Foster Road. And a legendary collector and cultivator of orchids, roses, and other plants. And I knew that, um, his days were kind of numbered because, um, a few months ago, uh, he gave away a lot of his orchid plants. So, I knew that, um, it's a matter of time and he's, he's gonna go with the Lord. So, Ray leaves behind a loving family, including his son, Mark, and daughter-in-law, Virginia, grandson, Matthew, as well as countless friends who benefited greatly from knowing him. Uh, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Lucas family. So, with that, uh, we are adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of, uh, Barbara Liberator and Ray Lucas to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, May 20 to 2023. This meeting is adjourned.